Portage County Board of Supervisors Meeting, recorded January 16, 2024.
A little after five, we'll call the Portage County Board to Order.
I'll find out, won't I?
Uh, roll call.
We have nineteen supervisors present: Supervisor Soslevich, Supervisor Dodge, Supervisor Hemrich, Supervisor Hahnell, Supervisor Pataki, and Supervisor Hockler, remote.
Pledge to the flag and then the invocation by Supervisor Peterson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Invocation by Supervisor Peterson.
Heavenly Father, we ask you blessing on us as we have been called to lead this great country or county in which we live, work, and play. Remind us that no matter where we live, everyone is our neighbor, and that throughout the ages, prophets have been called to protect and care for the lesser among us: the children, the elderly, and the poor. Teach us as we go through these issues today that is our responsibility to serve the common good of all. Give us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good. This we pray in your name. Amen.
So a note for the supervisors: we are currently working to try and get power to each of your workstations. But during the public invocation or the public input, you may want to just close your laptops so that you can save power. I'd hate to have somebody's run out, so just as a thought. Public notice: Members of the public who wish to address the county board on specific agenda items must register their requests at this time, with such comments subject to reasonable control of the county board chair as set forth in Roberts' Rules of Order.
First up is Bob Larson and then Nancy Rappi.
Bob Larson, 3283 Lindbergh Avenue, Stevens Point. Portage County Healthcare Center. This proposed referendum is asking voters to authorize Portage County to exceed the levy limit by $3.5 million per year. If this referendum is on the April 2, 2024 ballot, and it passes, a House value at $200,000 would see property taxes go up about $104 per year. On April 5, 2022, voters approved a referendum to exceed the levy limit by $4.5 million per year. A House value at $200,000 would see property taxes go up about $134 per year from that previous approved referendum. Both referendums total $8 million. A House value at $200,000 would see their property taxes go up about $238 per year. Why it's important to talk about the $3.5 million referendum and the $4.5 million referendum that previously passed: My own property taxes have already increased $627 per year as a result of a recently completed reassessment of all properties in Stevens Point. The Stevens Point School District has a $14 million operational referendum on the spring ballot. A House value at $200,000 would see their property taxes go up $88 the first year; the second year, your property taxes would go up $182 if the school referendum would pass. A home value at $200,000 would see property taxes go up about $420 per year if both referendums passed on the April 2, 2024 ballot. Potential costs in the future: Portage County has been discussing a new jail and courthouse. Estimated cost: $100 million-plus. Due to a poor decision by past mayor and city council, city taxpayers are on the hook for $50 million-plus to rebuild Business 51. If all these current referendums get on the ballot and pass, the Portage County taxpayers would be hard-pressed to stay in their homes. If the Portage County taxpayers pay for this healthcare center, they do not receive any discounts to use this facility. They do not get any preference to use this facility over residents from other counties. I would recommend that the Portage County supervisors vote "no" on this $3.5 million referendum. And if the county has a buyer to purchase the Portage County Healthcare Center at a fair price, sell it. It would give Portage County taxpayers some tax relief. Thank you.
Nancy Rappi and then Carlene Ferrante.
Nancy Rappi, 925 Smith Street, Stevens Point. I'm here in favor of the Healthcare Center referendum. By all accounts, you seem poised to claim the dubious distinction of being the only county board in 100 years to fail to preserve, protect, and defend the Healthcare Center. That's your legacy, one you'll never live down. Our ancestors knew the Healthcare Center was the cornerstone of top-notch eldercare, but those of you who have embraced a fascistic ideology are about to undo all that history. And what's more, you do it eagerly and willingly. Instead of hanging your heads in shame, apologizing to your constituents for this epic failure, you seem to be proud of what you're doing, actually giddy about the prospect of taking healthcare from the most vulnerable. Trot out and stand behind a litany of lame, made-up, manufactured excuses, but the truth is, you're terrified. If this referendum gets on the ballot, it will pass, and you can't let that happen. A third successful Healthcare Center referendum evidently is an impediment to your glorious 400-million monument to lawbreakers, but you'd never put that up for public vote, now would you? If you deny or delay this referendum, don't you dare call yourself a Christian. Don't you dare claim to be pro-life. You're nothing but a bunch of Pharisees. Some of you are sitting on personal fortunes from big agriculture families or lucrative real estate rental properties with backing from your wealthy business partners and deep-pocketed donors. That's whose business you're doing here today while the rest of us literally get sold down the river. Some unnamed private entity is going to get a sweetheart deal with little or no due diligence. The residents of Portage County are about to be robbed blind while big commissions get handed over to a broker who's only looking out for himself in another under-the-table closed-door deal done dirt cheap. Each and every one of you needs to disclose who your current and former business partners are, who your fellow LLC partners are. When you come clean with those details, then at least we'll know who's going to end up getting rich at the public expense. One last warning: I'm sure you'll refuse to heed it. There's a silver tsunami coming. The aging baby boom generation needs the five-star services only the Healthcare Center delivers. Prevent this from getting on the April ballot, and you will never live down this despicable violation of the public trust.
Carlene Ferrante and then John Bertelson.
Thank you for this opportunity, and I'll be brief. One of my favorite sayings I learned from the county board: Never continue to kick the can down the road. You're going to see an example of that probably today in a discussion of a proposal to move this referendum into the future to some other election for no good reason, as far as I can tell. I have not heard a good reason. That, my friends, is kicking the can down the road. And we know that has been done a long, long time off and on here. What really counts in the end is accountability. Your accountability to the voters who elected you. There's no better, more direct, more beautiful example of accountability than the referendum. Give them a chance to say what they need to say. So I ask you not to continue to kick the can down the road. Let's have this referendum now. Thank you very much.
John Bertelson and then Mary Ann Lyszewski.
I'm gonna do something a little different here. I've recently got into a little trouble with my big mouth, and people that know me realize what that is. But this is a disclaimer I'll probably be saying whenever I publicly speak from now on. Hello, my name is John Bertelson. I live at 3300 Arbor Vita Lane, and I'm running for the District 16 Supervisory Position on this Portage County Board. The views I express are solely my own and do not represent any organization, either public or private, nor their members. I speak for myself. Thank you. Here's a little tune I thought of for tonight. I'm just a bill. Yes, I'm only a bill, and I'm sitting here on Capitol Hill. Schoolhouse Rock. I was in, I don't know what, fifty years ago. It was a program that ran between my Saturday morning cartoons, and that was my first introduction to government. And it's a long story why I'm running for local office, but this is where the action is. And if I disagree with some or most of you on the board, this is where the rubber hits the road. And I just want to examine the committee meetings that we had on January 8. If you remember Schoolhouse Rock, I am a bill. A bill has several chances to actually become law. And I'm seeing that here when it comes to local government. We had four committees that met on January 8. And the Healthcare Center referendum failed in three of them. Space and Properties, it failed one "aye" to four "nays." Finance, it failed two "yes" to two "nays." And ExacOps, it failed two "yes" to three "nays." But in the Healthcare Center Committee, it passed. Three "yes," one "nye," and one abstention. If I do win election this April, I'd really like to get on two committees, one being the Healthcare Center Committee, for one very big reason. The staff of the Portage County Nielsen Home is amazing. I've gotten to know the head of the home, and I probably wouldn't be fighting as hard as I am if it wasn't quality facility. But what's important is long-term. And it is the county committees that have to keep it a five-star facility. And in addition to passing the referendum, if we want to make this long-term, I also got to keep in mind that I need to put people on the committee that are going to be physically responsible too, but also look at quality. And with that, I thank you for your time.
Mary Ann Lyszewski and then Mildred Neville.
I ask your indulgence, for those of you who heard these comments at the recent joint meeting. The concern about the occupancy rate at the Healthcare Center will be short-lived. Our assisted-living facilities are over 90% occupied, often because they both admit and keep residents who decline into needing skilled care in order to maximize their profits. They do not have the number and caliber of staff for skilled needs. Patients who are not walked, turned, or not have incontinency needs met soon will deteriorate. Once the state steps in to enforce the occupancy requirements, those residents at the skilled care places will need to be transferred to our to our skilled care facility. Also, when assisted-care facilities soon reach full occupancy as we live longer and baby boomers arrive, those needing the most care will also be discharged first from those assisted-care facilities. They will not be moving into their sold homes or into home healthcare. There's already a dire shortage of home care providers. In Wisconsin, it was reported in the ARP that we have the greatest need of many of the states in the Midwest. When assisted-care facilities fill the last 5% of their occupancy, there will be a waiting list for the Portage County Healthcare Center. Any of our staffing concerns are resolved with the new state-of-the-art facility offering the most competitive salaries, benefits, and working conditions. Thus, with increased future occupancy, I would like us to stop doing our financial calculations based on 80% occupancy of the skilled care and 90% of the CBRF beds. Clifton Larson Allen Consultants have shown our debt service coverage and our net operating margins will operate in the black when we use closer-to-full occupancy numbers. In their repeated complaint that the last two referendums, citizens only blindly were voting "yes" in response to the "vote yes" yard signs and did not understand the issue. There were numerous opportunities for the public to be well-informed, including over 24 lengthy newspaper stories from three local newspapers in the past 18 months, many of them on the front page and above the fold, an active Facebook website, many monthly public meetings, a candlelight vigil covered by TV channels seven to nine, and other times, seven to nine-covered meetings as recently as a month ago and tonight, 5,000 informational inserts in the buyer's guide and fast fact sheets, TV shirts, T-shirts worn, 400 yard signs to generate discussions, and Melissa Johnson and others speaking at Rotary and other private meetings. These future dynamics in occupancy and staffing and new construction and accurate calculations will produce the funds to support the facility. Citizens voted twice to keep the colony home. If they find this care is important enough to finance it and contribute, they should be allowed one more final vote to cover their and our future needs. Please respect the request of the voters. And finally, you all recall the excessive overcrowding in classrooms as baby boomers pass through schools with 50 to 60 children in the classroom. Now, 10 years into retirement, the same demand for nurses and nursing care will occupy these need for these residents and their longer life expectancy. And no longer are their daughters and daughter-in-laws available to care for these people at home because they are all working. Please respect the request of our voters. Thank you.
Mildred Neville and then Elva Klimer.
Mildred Neville, 1709 Jefferson Street, Stevens Point. The Portage County Healthcare Center has for decades been an outstanding asset to the life of our community and to the lives in our community. I urge you to pass the resolution for the Healthcare Center referendum in April so that Portage County voters will have the opportunity to make their wishes known. Thank you.
Elva Klimer and then Kevin Flatoff.
I'm Elva Klimer, and I live at 1815 County K, Custer, Wisconsin. I'm in favor of the Healthcare Center. I've been covering the meetings for about the last seven years. And I can't believe I'm standing here today having to ask once again for this board to listen to the voters. We have twice said, who have twice said, that they're willing to pay a little more to build a new facility that serves us so well. No one could foresee in their lifetime the effects that the COVID pandemic was going to bring to our health, isolation, economy, lifestyle, masks, of jobs. But the Portage County home never changed. Its quality of care, five-star rating. Director Marsha McDonald and her entire staff, real heroes, benefited all of Portage County. I had surgery scheduled for a hip replacement. Cancelled due to COVID, I had to wait and suffer. But Portage County never once closed the doors on their people. People were quitting their jobs. My partner retired early so as not to bring it home to me. But yet those workers who were working on healthcare were exposed to it daily. Courage. We now, it's our time. We owe all of the voters this next referendum. But I ask you to remember, when you cast your vote today, sometimes you don't know what you lost until you no longer have it. Thank you for your consideration.
Kevin Flatoff.
Chair Haga. Executive Vavalsky, Supervisors, thanks for the floor. I don't really have anything prepared. I wasn't quite ready for this, but I'll just kind of wing it. The last referendum, Melissa Johnson and many others, kind of deceived the public. And one of the big things that they didn't share with everybody is the fact that the Healthcare Center is a Medicare/Medicaid-funded facility, first-come, first-served basis, not to just Portage County residents. The last I know, there's eight or nine residents from Portage County in the Healthcare Center. That comes out if this passes to nearly $1 million per resident. At a minimum, the state should fund this, not the county. Things change. Portage County does not belong in the healthcare business anymore. It's time to privatize it. Thank you.
Anybody else that didn't sign up that would like to speak? Okay. What's that?
I'd like to add one more thing if I may.
Go ahead. Quickly, please. Up to the microphone, please.
I'm a single woman, and I have no children. My mother was the youngest of 14. I took care of my family, which consisted of a mother who lived almost to 102, an aunt that could never have children, who lived to 100 and a half, and a stepfather to the age of 97. I personally benefited by they being able to, in their last days. I retired early to care for my family until they could no longer be cared for at home. Portage County was there to help them with hospice, and they passed. So to say that it's no longer needed is absolutely a joke, but I'd like to add the fact that I never had children. I never was rude enough or cared so little about human life that I said I resented paying taxes to raise your children and give them swimming pools. I think an education is a necessity, the same thing as Portage County Home. Thank you.
Correspondence, number two.
We have the 2023 Employee Years of Service Recognition. And number three, we have the Portage County Anti-Harassment Policy. Yeah, and for those supervisors who came in late, if you could please sign those and then return those to me tonight before you leave, that would be wonderful.
Number four, approval of December 19, 2023 minutes. Motion by Lattick, seconded by Shabelski. Discussion. If there's no corrections or changes, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Confirmation of County Executive Committee Appointments, number five. Appointment of Paul Soslevich to the Board of Adjustments for the remainder of the term expiring June 30, 2024. Motion by Supervisor Soik, seconded by Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Did you need to read that or anything?
Uh-uh.
Discussion. There's no discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number six, appointment of Elise Holzberger to the Public Library Board for a three-year term expiring January 31, 2027. Motion by Supervisor Dubek, seconded by Supervisor Maresi. Discussion. There's no discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, internal resolution authorizing not to exceed $12,960,000 general obligation bonds or promissory notes for the Health and Human Service Building Improvements Project.
This is Resolution 200-2022-2024 submitted by the Finance Committee. This does require a 3/4 vote of members-elect.
Motion by Supervisor Rakowski, seconded by Supervisor Jankowski. Discussion. If there's no discussion, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, initial resolution authorizing not to exceed $3,620,000 general obligation promissory notes for highway improvement projects.
This is Resolution 201-2022-2024 submitted by the Finance Committee. This does require 3/4 vote of members-elect.
Motion by Supervisor Lattick, seconded by Supervisor Rockman. Discussion. There's no discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, approving and authorizing a referendum to further exceed the state-imposed property tax levy limit by $3.5 million for operating the Portage County Healthcare Center.
This is Resolution 202-2022-2024 submitted by the Space and Properties Committee, Finance Committee, Executive Operations Committee, and Healthcare Center Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Maresi, seconded by Supervisor Dubek. Discussion. Supervisor Soik.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So with everything that... Is the mic on?
I think so.
Okay. So with everything I heard tonight, it just reinforces what I've been thinking and saying all along. If we truly want to take this to the voters, then we should take it to as many voters as possible. And that would be in November, when we will have 100% more voter turnout than we will in April. And I hear a lot of grumbling behind me. All you have to do is check, Mr. Chair, that the spring elections, you're probably going to have 16,000 to 18,000 voters. In a presidential year, in a November election, you'll have closer to 40,000 in our county. So if we truly want to take it, and I see a lot of heads being shaken, no. If you truly want to take it to the voters of Portage County, then I agree with what I've heard tonight, and we should do that and take it to as many voters as we can. And that will be in November. So for that reason, I'll be voting no tonight so we can bring this back in front of as many voters as possible. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Splener.
Just to follow up on that and what I've said at last week's meeting. The last spring election, 17,000 voters showed up. The last presidential election in 2044,000. 44,000 voters in our county of 75,000-some people showed up. That's a substantial difference. If, I've always been a supporter of the Healthcare Center, as many people in the back have watched me on two years on the committee. It's a first-class operation with one leg. I'm one slip and fall away from visiting it on a long-term basis. So I see the need for it myself, but I am one vote. I am not the entire, a good portion of Portage County. And we're only seven months away from a presidential election. If we put it, if we can delay this until then, I think democracy will come through one way or another. At that election, we'll either get the county... The people are the ones that keep this Healthcare Center in place over the years. And if people can continue to do that, or if they feel that they're overburdened with other taxes from the school... other taxes from the school district or whatever else, they can vote no. And then we start looking at selling it to a qualified buyer. But to have it on a low-turnout spring election, you're going to get a lot of yabbats all the way around the county of yabbat. Yeah, they put it on a spring election so it could slide through. I want to eliminate the yabbats. I want democracy in full flourish at the Democratic election and get as many voters weighing in on the process as possible. Plus, you've got seven, eight months now to educate the voters on one way or another, whatever side of the issue you stand on. Right now, we're looking at only two months before an April election. So my feeling is that we should delay this. I'm going to vote no tonight, and I am a Christian, by the way.
I know you are.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm sorry. That's, I don't like being accused of something like that. So we'll get it done one way or another, but it should be with the most voters involved as possible. That way, we avoid any of the yabbats. We say, yes, fifty-one percent or more voted for this. We're going to build a quality health center that should support fifty to a hundred people and get it done. Or we don't. That's my position. Thank you.
Supervisor Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will reiterate, same as Supervisor Soik and Supervisor Splinter, I will be voting no, but it's better voter turnout on a presidential ballot. But also, what I've heard is, we need to get more information out to some of these people because it sounds like if we don't fund this thing, it's going to get shut down, which is quite the opposite of what I've understood. So it's possible, we need more insight into this. That's all I have to add on that.
Anybody else? Supervisor Oki.
Well, this is more of a question. So is it appropriate to just identify a process? So if this referendum tonight is voted down, but the board members are saying they would like to see it advanced to the fall election, how does that happen so that folks of the public understand?
So as far as the process goes, this was, this referendum, correct me if I'm wrong, Supervisor Maresi, but it started in the healthcare, the referendum. So I would believe that the same process it would follow, it would start in... If it were to fail tonight, I'm sure that's something that will be brought up by the Nursing Home Committee to bring it forward. We cannot continue down the path that we're going right now, so we have to find that avenue. And I, from what I'm hearing from a lot of the other people, and just to clarify this, because the question about the number of votes, I don't know if you want to take your pens out, but in the April of twenty-two, there was seventeen thousand six hundred and fifty-nine votes, people that voted. And in November of twenty-twenty, there was forty thousand seven hundred and eighty-four. So if I take that April twenty-two election and I just double it, that's thirty-five thousand. Still hasn't, it's still five thousand away from the forty thousand. So when we talk about the amount of people that are going to participate in it, and I heard it over and over, that all the voters, and I heard we want to hear from the voters of Portage County, why not let them be heard? So.
Thank you.
Who else had their hand up? Supervisor Rockman and Supervisor Madine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I really just have more of a question, and I suppose it's hypothetical, so I'm not even really sure who to pose it to. But I'm relatively new to this, and the first thing I learned is stuff takes a while to get done around here. And part of that is for good reasons, so that decisions are made, you know, with the right amount of information, the right amount of deliberation, and I understand all that. But if we were to delay, let's say best case, not best-case scenario, but the scenario where we delay putting it on the referendum until November, is there any way we can be sure that this tax levy limit of three and a half million dollars as an increase won't all of a sudden come up short as it did last time around? Because we got the referendum, and correct me if I'm wrong on the history, we got the referendum and we agreed to do this, and then they came back and they found out there were more operational costs. Things go up, like lots of unintended consequences and expenses. But what's to say that doesn't happen again? It feels to me like there's a potential here to completely derail the thing by pushing it back to November. And again, I don't know this, and I'm not sure who to ask.
So at our last meeting on the ninth, I think it was, when we had the four committees together, the question I think was posed by you, Supervisor Matt Jakowski, can you help us out there?
Sure. Talking with our construction expert at the time, he said a one to two percent increase would be all. And that was followed up with the finance director talking about how we had, and actually, I think Chair Maresi of the Healthcare Center Committee even had said they had added some wiggle room within the referendum.
And I think that was Mr. Shabelski when they originally started. He added a half million dollars for wiggle room, if that's correct, Mr. Shabelski?
That's correct.
So hopefully, we've got enough in there again. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I work way too much sometimes for this, and I miss out on a few things.
No, I want you to make sure you're fully informed so you can make a good decision. Supervisor Madine, then Supervisor Maresi.
I have some comments I'd like to make, but I would like to ask the executive if he could just give us a, just a very short statement on conceptual alternatives that might...
I'm, and I guess I'm... John, are you prepared to make a short statement?
Good evening, supervisors, good evening, the public. When you say a conceptual statement, basically, I'll kind of state what I stated at a healthcare committee meeting. You've got five choices that can take place at this healthcare center. One, you can close it down. Two, it could actually possibly be closed down because of mechanical difficulties. Three, you could operate it out of the budget, but if you operate that out of the budget, all the other departments would have to sacrifice substantially to keep it running. Number four, you could possibly go to referendum, which we're considering. And number five is a sale. And so there is currently nothing with a resolution for action to sell the healthcare center before any committee at this time. There may be a change in the future, and I'm actually working diligently to have that process take place. If I think about it, when considering the decision that's put before you today, I suggest you take a look at these parameters. What is the best utilization of taxpayers' money when you look at the overall needs of the county now and in the future? We are asking the taxpayers for up to eighteen million dollars per year. Just because we can ask for money from the taxpayers, should we? If you had an option of spending an additional eight million dollars on county needs, would you spend it all on the healthcare center? Are there other options to solve the concerns at the healthcare center for the overall benefit of the county? I think those are the questions you need to ask yourself today. Any other questions? Julie.
I did this wrong. But if we were to sell it, would you sell it with the contingency that the person...
I want to remind everybody what's on the agenda tonight is, the question is regarding this, is whether we should be allowed to exceed the levy limit. And I think that's, that is not on the agenda.
It's just like, when the word of these things gets passed around the entire county, you know, it's, I think it's like hanging out there, and there's questions and concerns that would affect whether or not I would vote for April or November. Does that make sense? I mean, I'm not trying to be...
I see them as two completely different questions. And again, the question that's before us now is, should we allow them, whether we should allow them to exceed the levy limit in April, or should allow them to exceed the levy limit in November? That's something that each of us have to figure out, whether it's viable or not. The other part, the executive has said, is that we have no resolutions at this time to do anything other than that, and that's not what's on the agenda. The agenda tonight is to exceed the levy limit. That's the question.
But we're actually not amending it to move it to November.
No.
It's just staying yes or no for April right now.
Yes. Yes, yes, we cannot have any amendments to it, depending on what your wishes are. If you believe it should be at a different time, then you would vote no on it because of the simple fact that the question that's before you is whether we're going to have a referendum in April, or whether you want to have that referendum in April. And that's to exceed the levy limit.
But if we had the referendum in April, if that vote passed now, would you be unable to consider any of those other options, including a possible sale of the building?
They're all different questions. They're all separate questions in the referendum. They're not, they're not the same because those questions aren't on the referendum. So we're not asking the public any of those questions.
I'm not talking about they're asking the public, but I'm just saying, if you, if the referendum in April passed, if that vote passed, would you be kind of frozen in time until that vote?
No.
To taking any other possible action?
No. That wouldn't preclude us from doing any other action. Supervisor Soik. Oh, I'm sorry. Supervisor Maresi, I said Supervisor Maresi, then Supervisor Soik.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify some of the money and timeline of things, so when we proposed this referendum, we added some padding in there because we were hoping to not have the same kind of conundrum that we had with the initial referendum of four point five million dollars. So Supervisor Shabelski actually suggested that we add some padding to it. Also, in regards to the construction numbers, we did use November twenty twenty-four construction numbers so that we would have a more realistic outlook on the financial component of the structure side. The, in regards to the operations of the facility, what we have, when we worked with CLA, we used an eighty percent occupancy rate, which I know was kind of considered to be a little, a bit of a low-ball estimate of what, you know, how many people would actually be in there. But we did that to make sure that the county board was getting numbers that could be possible. Those are our worst-case scenario type of numbers. So when we look at the operations of the facility at an eighty percent occupancy, you are getting the worst-case scenario numbers, which then gets us to that three point five million dollars annually for the next twenty years. However, you know, if things go as planned and we're able to have an occupancy or census at ninety, ninety-five percent, we are not fully, you know, we don't have to fully levy that three point five million dollars. Our goal with that, as the committee, was to be transparent, to make sure that the county board understood that this could be a reality if we are only at eighty percent. In terms of going to an April referendum, we chose April because our last referendum was in April. If you look at polling data, I know the numbers are lower in terms of the actual turnout for the election, and I respect that. We want to have the democratic process fully expressed as much as possible. However, when we look at some of the rumors that I was hearing from comments in the gallery and in the supervisor, amongst the supervisors, is that people were uninformed, and they only voted because they saw vote yes on a sign. Well, actually, if you look at polling data and you look at voter turnout for spring elections, those are actually some of the most highly-informed voters, because they are not only voting for a national election, which just includes a president, they're voting for things like school board, they're voting for county board supervisors, they're voting for judges, they're voting for Supreme Court justices, they're voting for city council members. They're people who are actively engaged in their community through a political lens, and they're highly-informed voters. So accusing them of being uninformed or less informed is just not true. I think what we're trying to do is to prevent the kicking of the can further down the road. I was appointed to this committee seven years ago, when I was appointed to the county board, and we're having the same conversation. It's like Groundhog Day. You know, another Groundhog Day conversation that we often have in here is about the justice center and the jail and the courthouses, and about what we're going to do about it. And I think, you know, it's about time we make some decisions and allow the voters to have their say. If they vote it down, we have a direction. Executive Pavelski is working on multiple options. If they vote to approve it, we have a direction, we have a mandate, especially if they vote at sixty percent, like they did last time. However, if we get, if the referendum passes in April, it does not make the county board have to build this building, as we saw with the last referendum, as Chair Haga said. So my hope here is to have the people's voice heard so that we can take a direction, stop kicking the can down the road, like we have done since my tenure on this board, and move in a direction that's positive for our community, or at least give them an answer today. Thank you.
Supervisor Madine.
All right, now I can make my comments after the executive's...
Do you need the executive anymore?
No, I do not. That's why I want to make sure that you could...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just one comment, though. I would like to answer Supervisor Rockman's question about the November, potential November referendum. You know, is a November election referendum vote possible with the timing of the budget and the adoption of tax bills? And yes, it is. The county has successfully completed a fall referendum vote previously. A November referendum would require the county to modify the dates for the budget adoption and potential veto override meeting, and the tax bills would be mailed out a little bit later than typical, but all within the county and statutory deadlines, just so you know.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I?
Yep.
Thank you.
Supervisor Madine.
All right. I've been a strong supporter of the County Home and now Healthcare Center throughout my lifetime here. I've studied the issue, I've gone over it with the people in the district that I represent. I know a lot of people in the district because I've been a supervisor for quite a while, so I talked to a number of people. And they said to me that if an alternative to the county operation of the healthcare center arises, they have told me in about two out of three, or two of one, that if that would occur, then I should vote against placing the question on the April referendum in order to allow time for the possibility of other alternatives. However, if there's not an alternative to the county operation arising, they request I vote for placing the question on the April referendum. I'd like to adhere to their wishes, and I'll tell you what else came about as a result of that. That shows me that they are concerned about Portage County property taxes. Portage County taxes had been below the state average historically up until twenty twenty. Until then, we were in the second quartile of the seventy-two counties. So that placed us within a group where there was thirty-six of the thirty-two counties had higher taxes than we have now. In twenty twenty-one, the county tax rate placed us on the third quartile of the seventy-two counties. So now it changed, and now we only have eighteen counties that have a higher tax rate than our group. Okay? We're committed, in the next few years, to meet our statutory obligation to provide safe and efficient public safety facilities, and that cost will move us up higher in the third quartile of the seventy-two counties, but still keeps us in the group where there's eighteen of the seventy-two counties have a higher tax rate than our group. Okay? So then, the cost of the county operation of the healthcare center, based on the packet that we have in front of us, would move us up into the fourth quartile of the seventy-two counties, where only a couple of counties would have a higher tax rate than Portage County. I've gone over this with the county finance director to make sure I'm not off-base with this statement. We could probably live with that extremely high tax rate for their proposed twenty-year duration, but that would restrict and restrain our ability to provide adequate health and social services. services, transportation, aging and disability services, library services, parks, recycling, emergency medical services, fair employee compensation, and a myriad of other services that the county provides. And because of that, that additional time is necessary to let the conceptual, conceptual alternatives arise. In line with the majority of my constituents, I plan to vote no on placing the referendum on the April ballot.
Supervisor Matt Chakowsky.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple things. No one tell the IRS about my large agricultural wealth I sit on here tonight. There was also mentioned that there's no good reasons to delay. In preparation for the meeting tonight and after the last meeting, I, I've thought of quite a few good reasons to delay, and probably the top three are right here. Number one, Finance Director Josie will have the opportunity to use exact numbers for the referendum. Right now, we're using estimate numbers. I think it's a good thing if we can use exact numbers, especially when we're talking about $3.5 million for the next 20 years. When I go to spend a lot of money, people want to know exact numbers. They don't tell me to give them an estimate. Number two, it allows for almost two times the number of Portage County voters to have their vote counted. Let's be inclusive of all, even the uneducated. Number three, it would allow county staff and supervisors a chance to be educated and to educate the public, the electorate, more. We're going to jam an education about this referendum into a couple months. Wouldn't four or five months be a lot better? Thank you.
Anybody else? Supervisor Gifford.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thanks for the time here. I wanted to speak in favor of the referendum in April and failing that in favor of passing the referendum in November. And I also wanted to just spend a couple of my five minutes addressing the undercurrent that I hear in the room about privatizing and sell-off the nursing home. And I think that's going to be bubbling along all the way till November if we go that way. At the Wisconsin County Association, I heard a really sharp, little smart system analysis done by the childhood association director. She said, "Childcare in our state is a broken business model, a failed market." And I thought a lot about that in the last couple of weeks, and it occurs to me that our elder care system can be added to that set of broken business models. Now, given that our health care center funding is from Medicare, Medicaid, and this funding system is failing us, I would guess other county or nursing homes are in similar dire straits in Wisconsin. I'd be surprised if they're not all. So this suggests to me a new paradigm is needed in our state, and that would be for our legislature to step up and start to provide supplemental funding to these county nursing homes, which is not derived from property taxes at the local level, because this divides our people along income and age lines. So this would require the county association to get on the case of these legislators to make this paradigm shift. The other point being made by some in the public in this meeting is that skilled nursing home, skilled nursing care and elder care should be privatized. You know, I spent some hours looking at the professional medical literature. You can do literature searches that aren't on Yahoo. On the topic of failure when privatizing skilled nursing care and elder care, and there is a lot, I'm talking thousands of articles that back up that point. So I think this question of privatizing will continue to bubble on the back burner as we move toward November. And to me, this is just an ideological holdover from the Reagan era. But, you know, I've often said here, and you're probably sick of hearing me say that, but you cannot govern on ideology for that. You need facts, data, research, listening to the professionals who study this stuff all their lives for a living. And they say don't privatize it, okay? So let's exceed the levy limit, and then let's start changing this whole system from there. And yes, we're a small county, but we could actually take the lead in the county's association on this point if we step up and be bold. Thanks for your time.
Anybody else? Supervisor Lattick.
Thank you. Just looking at construction, if we do the referendum and it would pass in April, we're running right into the construction season where everybody already is starting building. We still have to get it designed, hire a construction manager, go out for bid. It's, to me, it seems unlikely you would get a shovel in the ground before November anyway. So I think it'd be better if we had a November referendum, design over the winter, and be out for bid next spring is the way I see it. And I'm also in favor of letting everybody, if we have 200 or 250% more participation in November with our, our residents or electorate, I think that's where we should be at.
Supervisor Maresi.
Just to, just to piggyback on that a little bit, currently, if, if this passes in April, we would be ready to go and have shovels in the ground by November, hence those numbers. And then I believe, Marsha, please correct me if I'm wrong, we would be operational in the new building the following summer, probably early fall is more a proper timeline, knowing construction, maybe even more like November. So just so people understand that, if we do push that back, you know, we're setting ourselves back an additional, you know, seven to nine months minimum if the board decides to build a building, which again, this board could choose not to. I would hope the board would do that, would, would build a building if that's what the people's wishes are. So, thank you.
Anybody? Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I would just like to reiterate the same opinion of bringing it to a lot more people in a fall election. Just seems like the right thing to do, to have more people involved. I think Supervisor Splinter said it very well when he stated that there's going to be, well, maybe I should have voted, maybe I shouldn't, maybe, maybe, maybe. If we have more people involved, the better off it'll be, the better yardstick it'll be for the feeling of the whole county when we're doubling what we bring to the table as far as voter count goes. That being said, I'd also like to say, our forefathers put a lot of thought and effort in the ideology of separation of church and state. That ideology is very evident in our Constitution of the United States of America, our state constitution and county government. That I was taught in constitutional education. Scripture has taught me that the Lord Jesus Christ is the only one allowed to judge a person. I believe he'll decide whether or not I am a good Christian. Thank you, everybody.
Supervisor Oki.
Thank you once again. I, just, just so I understand in my mind, what's before us now would be, if it goes forth, would be an spring election. But that would not take it, take future referendums, say in the fall, off, off the table. So, and I also like thinking about less traditional ways of doing business, and if that discussion is happening at the committee level, it's not dialogue that I've heard. So if there are other options than the five options that Executive Pavelski put out there in terms of clothes because of closing or operations failure or selling it, I would like to hear those options. And, you know, I think we've, this, this is a very traditional system in Portage County with deep footprints, but I think, and it brings along with it a traditional way of operations. So I guess what I'm saying, if there's a more non-traditional way of operating it, if there's partnerships that can be brought into this that are new to the way we are used to doing business, I would, I would opt to learn those. And my first job was at the health care center, so I started my career there, so I, I understand operations and I understand the need for, for that skilled level of care. So if, if again what I stated in the beginning is so with a failed, with a referendum at this point, what we're voting on is April, but it would not deaden a future referendum. Is that correct?
Yes. Anybody else?
Supervisor Jakowski.
Supervisor Matt Chakowsky.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hearing Supervisor, hearing Supervisor Gifford's comments and Supervisor Oki's comments about the broken business model, and then thinking outside the box, for lack of a better term, there, I have to question, are we, is it a broken business model, or is it an antiquated business model? Are we driving a Pinto, limping it along, and going to purchase another Pinto? Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, if there's no further comments. Maria, are you ready?
Oh, there's somebody.
Jeannie, did you have your hand up?
Yes.
Go ahead.
The last referendum was for $4.5 million. The people in my district did not approve spending that money. Therefore, I will not support the next referendum for additional $3.5 million. I think it's time that we started thinking about the taxpayers in this county. I respect Alva greatly, and she's for the referendum. I understand that because of various reasons. But many, many of her neighbors do not, and I represent them. So I will be a no.
Anybody else?
I don't have anybody else online, Lee.
All right. We're going to use the clickers. So, are you ready?
Yep.
All those in favor of an April referendum, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
Are we ready, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemrick.
You're muted, Joan. Joan, you're muted. Or a thumbs up or a thumbs down?
I vote yes.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Pataki.
Is he standing? Is he muted? Supervisor Pataki, yes or no?
Yes.
Stan?
Not muted.
Could that, yeah, so what, what is your vote on the referendum question, Stan? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
His thumbs up.
His thumbs up, he's yes.
Yes.
Supervisor Dodge?
No.
No.
And one last time for Supervisor Hemrick.
If he's online, you'll lose him. Oh, okay.
Motion fails, eight to 16.
Number 10, amending Portage County Code of Ordinance, Section 3.1.25, entitling Portage County Transportation Coordinating Committee to change the membership criteria from representative of the finance committee to supervisor member-at-large and adding a representative from the Health and Human Service Department.
This is Resolution 203-2022-2024, submitted by the Executive Operations Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Rakowski, seconded by Supervisor Maresi. Discussion. Supervisor Maresi.
I, I just have a question. It's kind of about the next two resolutions. What, what is the reasoning behind kind of this consolidation? If you can just explain, that'd be great. Thank you.
So this one, this is on the transportation, the transportation one, I had to really ask a lot of people on that finance committee if somebody would go on that transportation committee. It's hard to find people when they have some of this stuff, and I have other people who are more passionate about the transportation. And by having the flexibility to be able to have someone, any one of the other 24 supervisors to pick from them, Supervisor Gifford would be a perfect example of someone that I would want on transportation, and, and he, you are on their right spot. So, but if he wasn't, I would be someone that I would want to put on there. But if he's not on the finance committee, I couldn't, I couldn't add him to it. Supervisor Rakowski.
I asked, actually brought this one to the executive ops and Chair Hagga, and it was partly for that reason, for like, for me, these are daytime meetings, they're Wednesdays, which I, I do have a lot of other things I have to do on Wednesdays. And I agree, I know like Bob Gifford, people that are more passionate for this committee would actually be a better fit than saying, let's just say somebody from finance needs to be on this.
It's a big committee, too. There's 10 members or something on it. There's, there's quite a, and, and of those, there's, there's quite a few people that need to fit criteria to even be on that. There's people that are from the private sector, there are people from the nursing, medical field. Supervisor Gifford.
Yeah, I guess I would speak, I would agree with the, the tone and the thrust of this, too, because I went to the city's revisioning meeting, it was a three-hour-long meeting. I saw Supervisor Maresi there, too. And a key feature of that redesign, revision of downtown Seaton's Point is going to be the transit, you know, transportation. And we had our director from the central transportation there, Talon. So it kind of underscored to me that, yeah, we, we do need to pay a lot of attention, and we'll need to pay ever more attention to transportation, particularly mass transit in our county and our region. So I, I would favor finding somebody that is more enthusiastic about transportation and wants to devote time to it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I turned the screen off.
What's that?
I turned that off, if you want to do it that way.
Uh, if there's no other questions, all those in favor with aye? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 11, amending Portage County Code of Ordinance, Section 3.1.38, entitled, entitled Portage County Business Council to remove the appointment of the chairperson of the finance committee and clarifying membership status of the county executive and the county board chair.
This is Resolution 204-2022-2024, submitted by the Executive Operations Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Lattick, seconded by Supervisor Jenkowski. This one is because of the fact that we needed to make sure that we had language, that we don't have anything as far as language in our ordinances that match up with the business council. So that's what the clarification is on this one. So if there's no other comments, Supervisor Maresi.
Just one other question. It's a tough one. I hesitate to ask, but I'm going to ask. Have you cleared this with the Portage County Business Council? And the reason why I ask is because I think they're a valuable partner in this.
So-
And I'm, I'm, I'm a bit concerned because it limits it to either one of two members, the executive or, or the county board chair. And I realize that we're talking about the position, not the person, but it seems to be that the last two interactions that our executive have had with the Portage County Business Council has led to a letter from the Freedom From Religion Foundation, seeing him to stop bringing religion into these meetings. Now, I would fully respect his- Now, I would fully respect his wish to worship how he wants to, however, in the spirit of Supervisor Jakowski's comment about freedom, you know, separation of church and state, I just wonder how the Portage County Business Council feels about having this decision mandated upon them.
So on this one, and I'm going to ask Lee if he, he doesn't have a mic, if he can help with this, because Lee was a big part. And again, I wanted to say that, as I understand it, the Business Council has language in their bylaws. Ours don't, from Portage County, do not match what they're requesting. That's why we needed to have this to clarify it, but Lee, if you could.
Correct, yeah, this is already just mirroring the language that's already in the agreement between the county and the Business Council.
And it was a recent, too, we just had it recently.
So this is, we're just updating our ordinance language to match the agreement that's already been signed by both parties.
I understand that, I'm just more concerned about the personnel side of things currently.
Yeah, and that's already been agreed on their side, on the Portage County Business Council side.
Okay.
We're the ones catching up. That's what's changing, is we're catching up to them, okay? That's what this is doing.
Got you.
Okay? Does that help to explain it?
Yeah, I understand that you're not going to comment.
All right.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, Supervisor Gifford.
Could you just clarify for me what is the current status, membership of the executive and yourself with the Business Council? This is the first time I had heard of this situation, so I'm just curious, what's the status now?
Both of us are on Portage County Business Council.
All right, so you attend all the meetings and so forth?
One or the other of us does. Okay. Any other discussion? If there's no further discussion, all those in, oh, Genie, you have a question? Genie, a lot of times I don't see you up there, so just if somebody from home wants to say something, just pipe in, please.
Okay.
Go ahead, Genie.
When I was Chair of Finance for two terms, a term ago, I did attend those meetings, and I felt that it was a misuse of per diem for myself to be present when the two executives from the county were present. And I didn't feel that I shared anything new and different relating to the Finance Committee, that group. So I stopped attending, and knowing that the executive and the county board chair were there, we were well represented. And as I remember, we had reduced the funding, the county funding, to that group as well.
And as I sit here now, on the Portage County Business Council agenda, the county executive has a standing line for update. The mayor's on there for update, the county exec's on there for update, and I'm trying to think of a couple of other ones, but not the county board chair, but the executive, and a lot of times else, the executive will look over and see if there's anything I wanted to add, so, just so you understand our roles in that, so. And we have cut the funding, it used to be $75,000, I believe, at one time, and we took it down to $25,000, I believe. If there's no further questions, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number 12, expressing appreciation to those employees who retired from Portage County or who have passed away while in the employ of Portage County in 2023.
This is Resolution 205-2022-2024, submitted by the Human Resources Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Dubac, seconded by Supervisor Keller. If you look through that list, there's one person in there that's got 44 years of service, and there are actually two people that have passed away while they were in their employ. We've got a lot of dedicated people in there, some of those numbers, 30, I think dispatch was 30, 32, there was a jailer, 30, 35. Those are things that are kind of going by the wayside, you don't see that kind of employee employee input over the years, those get smaller and smaller. Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
May I ask, we give all those people a round of applause?
Definitely, thank you. We have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number 13, reauthorizing of workers' compensation self-insurance program.
This is Resolution 206-2022-2024, submitted by the Finance Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Maresi, seconded by Supervisor Rockman. Discussion. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Before we go, we have another meeting that is on our site for, is it 23rd?
23rd.
The 23rd, and that is a placeholder if we need to call a county board, so that is out there, and that is for a veto. If not, we will not have, we will not have another board meeting until next month, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Supervisor Barry Jakowski, seconded by Supervisor Oki. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Video recordings of these meetings are available on the city's website, StevensPoint.com/videos.